You weren't.
They interviewed one of the founders recount.
So she's gonna have to take.
Hundred bucks.
Hundred bucks.
I said, well, I said, uh, a hundred dollars. The location has to file, but unfortunately taxpayers have to pay.
One for her and one for Andrew.
Can you believe the tax.
Ready? Good afternoon, everybody. Today is June 12th, 2023. We're gonna call the Warwick County Commissioners Meeting to Order and ask Sheriff Wider to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all right. First area, uh, sorry, first order of business is area plan.
Okay, um, our first item on the agenda are some ordinance changes that their science commission recommended approval for. First one is an ordinance to amend Article Five, Special Use Section Three, Special Use Designations of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance in effect for Warwick County, Indiana. Purpose of the ordinance was to designate an SU thirty, meaning a bed and breakfast under the special use designation. Richard Reed made the motion to recommend, um, approval, and it was seconded by President Valiant and carried unanimously. So there are three ordinances that the APC recommended approval to, and they all have to do with the bed and breakfast. The first one would be the definition, um, second one's what zonings we wanted, felt they'd go in. And then the third one is extra conditions that would further one of this.
Just gonna look at approving these one at a time.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Then, I don't recall, under my tenure, if we've ever had any changes to ordinances through APC Council. Do you, uh, need to look at these or have you looked at these?
I don't believe we've seen them. Uh, they, I'm sure have gone through APC's council.
Sure.
Review, but I don't think, I don't think we've seen them yet.
We did do zoning certifications.
Okay.
As soon as they were approved.
And they were at least on my radar because we discussed them before our meeting the other day.
Uh-huh.
With council there, so I was familiar with some of it.
Molly, what's zoning certification mean? Is that something the state does then?
No, it's something our office does. It's actually an ordinance certification on this one. Uh, we prepared the minutes, I checked them, and then I typed up a letter, um, and certified to that effect, what was done at the area plan commission.
Okay, okay.
Like we do for zonings.
Okay, okay. I, I thought it was another process or something that you had to do, okay.
No, they were prepared and put in your boxes.
I don't have any questions.
I'm still trying to understand it, so. Probably need to research it and read up on it a little bit more, so I can make a good, a good decision on it.
So Commissioners, my question when I was with, uh, Morley Dollar Council the other day was, does this cover Airbnb's verbo's? Apparently it does not because it states in the ordinance that the owner of the property must live in the property that's being, uh, rented or leased. No particular, uh, preference there, just that was my question and was answered.
Yeah, the definitions of private establishment provides up to six sleeping rooms for rent for set terms, generally by the week or month, in which meals may be provided on, on a communal basis, but in which cooking is prohibited in individual sleeping rooms. And then we limited the zonings that this SU thirty would be allowed in for con, ag, and then the R one, R one A, R one B, R one C, and R one D zonings, which are the one family zoning. And then we limited the SU thirties to, uh, one, a person or the owners operating the bed and breakfast shall be a resident of the premises. No case shall a bed and breakfast be located in an accessory building, must provide two parking places plus one for each guest on premise, and one sign, up to twenty-five square feet allowed, twenty-five feet from right away. So this would be a bed and breakfast in agricultural area was the vision for this ordinance, where they could, uh, the lady that came in, she wanted to have like horses and bees, and so she didn't wanna go commercial, and so this kept it agricultural.
Is this something that the health department would have to inspect on a routine basis?
I am not sure.
If they were serving food to the public or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Any more time to look at?
You wanna table it?
I'd like to re, do more research on it.
Okay.
Make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table into our next meeting.
Bob, all, all three? Or just?
I think they all.
Yeah.
All in line with each other.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure I was clear. I'll second that.
I have a first and a second to table, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And so we're tabling, is that to the next Commissioner meeting, Bob?
Yes, sir.
June twenty-sixth?
Yes. Okay, um, our next items are requests for an extension of surety. It's Meyer-Wark subdivision. Meyer Stores Limited Partnership by Michael Pencil VP, holding two letters of credit, um, for commercial entrance at eighty-five thousand and drainage at two hundred and fourteen thousand. They've had eight years, requesting a year for the same dollar amount. These expire June twenty-seventh of twenty-three, and this was continued from the last May eighth Commissioners' meeting. I did get in contact, um, and I didn't print the email, but, um, they would ask for one more year, and then their plan is to come back and vacate the plat. And then when they're ready to build, get closer to that time, they'll come in with a new subdivision.
Well, Molly, I appreciate you reaching out to them. I, I get a lot of questions on this when something's gonna happen on that corner or so.
Sure.
Highly visible corner. I think there's people in the community wanna see something happen there, but I appreciate you reaching out to Meyer and getting some of those questions answered, so. I guess with that being said, I guess I will make a motion to extend, I guess, for one more year.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Our next item is a request to rezone. Petition, it's PCR twenty-three oh four, petitioner Special Waste Services Inc. of Joe Beard, owner, and Jero's Properties LLC by Joe Beard, owner. It's to rezone three point one five acres on the west side of Prospect Drive, approximately six hundred feet north of the intersection of Van Road and Prospect Drive, from M two, General Industrial Zoning District, to an M three, Solid Waste Disposal Zoning District. Being lot seven and eight, Moore Research Industrial Center Number Three, recorded in document number nineteen ninety-six R zero zero three seven five eight, Ohio Township seventeen six and eight. Advertisement standard, March second of twenty-three, continued from the March thirteenth and the April tenth APC meetings. Um, it was Richard Reed who made a mo- motion for positive recommendation to the county commissioners, seconded by Doris Horn and carried unanimously.
Where did we leave this conversation last time? No, at some point there were some requests to do some, some research out there, um, involving the health department. The health department could not do said research.
So I think that's where we're at today, as far as, uh, getting some ground samples, grounds, water samples and seeing.
Right.
If the layers contaminated or not.
Do you guys wanna come up?
Hi, I'm Matt Bill, Joe Beard's associate, one and five mill director.
Okay.
Have you all have had any ground samples of, uh, the premises out there to see if there's any contamination of the area?
Do I have thirty-one of them?
Excuse me, sir, who are you?
Joe Beard.
The, the, we have not any soil samples per se. We do have stormwater samples that we collect on annual basis, and those are submitted to the Indian Department of Environmental and Energy, under number six.
Okay. I've just got a lot of concerns with the residence, residential area down, downhill from you. Kids playing in their backyards and such, I wouldn't want them to get any type of contamination or any type, be water-wading in any type of waste, some speak.
But Mr. Beard, I, I'm not on APC or zoning boards or anything, so I don't get to see some of the stuff, maybe, uh, others get to see. Uh, what are you planning on doing there with this?
Solidifying, solid, solidifying the grease trap waste and car wash pit waste. The landfills has got the, uh, the costs, so it's over and selective. We, we, the closest place to take it to, and as it's solid, even though it's considered a wet waste because it is, you know, like car wash pit waste and grease trap waste. I'm assuming y'all would understand what that, what them two waste streams are. You gotta solidify it, or you take it somewhere for them to solidify it, and it's, I mean, we've got pricing anywhere from over a hundred to two hundred dollars a ton. Um, this, the landfills are selective because of the origin of the waste. It's, it's considered a wet waste, even though it is, it's, if we're solidify it, so we gotta split it up between taking it to Lobshire, um, Blackfoot, uh, what's the one up there, Western Indy, um, Southern Indianapolis, it's just looking in my mind.
Indianapolis.
It's Western Indianapolis, uh, Beaver Dam. Uh, there's a couple over there, more we can take it to.
May I ask what technology used to solidify it?
Um, the basic technology is like a sawdust, but might I go ahead and explain what those, those pellets are?
Oh, well, they're like a fibrous pellet that is super absorbent. So, uh, what basically you would do is offload the water into the waste thing, waste container or whatever, and then add the material to solidify this, so it'll be accepted by landfill. That significantly reduce cost to getting rid of just liquid waste. It's, it's, it's very expensive for our customers to get liquid waste disposed of, and it's, it's a profile, uh, it's harder to profile it into, except it into a landfill. Fortunately, um, you know, we do have a few places to dispose liquid waste, but these landfill waste streams in the Republic are also a part of becoming more and more selective, like you said, on what they, what they wanted into their landfill, because they've gotta maintain their integrity, their slough to their landfill, so they don't want much of liquid waste in there because that creates a hazard for their landfill, for their operators and everything else in, in the landfill, so.
So, so this is put into a container to dry, or is this put out in the open, on the open ground to dry?
Uh, no, it's in a, it's in a, like a concrete container, like a concrete vault type deal.
Is it on site?
Yeah, and solidified when it comes in.
Is it above ground or below ground?
Above ground. And it's not left unsolidified. It's, it, when it comes in, it gets solidified and it's put in a roll-off container, so it's not open, and, I mean, it, it doesn't pose a hazard to the employees or anybody around, because it is maintained as it comes in. It doesn't sit over night or for a weekend or anything like that. It's processed when it arrives.
Is anybody here to speak against this?
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this action? Nobody? Okay. So you guys have, have kind of alluded to the fact that the landfills are concerned, so I hope you understand why we're a little bit concerned with it as well, because you're very close to residential properties.
Well, then we won't be storing material on site.
Processing, correct?
It's just processing.
Yeah.
In order for us to obtain a, in a, a solidification permit from the Indian Department of Environmental we have the zone number three.
Okay.
But that's what you're requesting, right?
Yeah.
So you can store it on site with an M three?
We can process it and dispose of it. We can't, there's only, there's a certain amount of time, so we can have it on site. We gotta dispose of it in a certain amount of days if we get it, but it will be containerized. It's not gonna be out in the open. It'll be either in a frac tank or roll-off once it's solidified.
Yeah, it's a covered roll-off.
Yeah, right.
I mean, we've already got another situation in Warwick County where we've got things that are sitting that, uh, need to, need to be moved quicker than they're being moved. That's from the food industry.
I just don't know what the M three, uh, allows them to do that, that we don't know about. You know, that's, that.
Well, the M three allows the, the processing part of it. It's pretty specifically listed.
Where is it?
And I'm sorry, I don't have my ordinance. Right.
So then who, so does IDM dictate the storage and is, is that who dictates all that? And that's clearly, this, that's probably clearly outlined in IDM, I would think.
Yeah, what is that period of time?
That would be in our permit. It'd be under thirty days. I mean, this material, we don't wanna sit on a property that takes up space, um, and we gotta bill our customers. We can't bill our customers until we dispose of the material, so it shows a financial situation at that point. But the, the M three is required by IDM for us to do these, to apply for the permit.
But you're doing this now, but IDM wants you to get the M three permit, right? Oh, you're not doing it now? Okay.
We're having a truck every day.
Okay. Oh, okay.
We, we bulk it, but then we go out and pick it up in a twelve hundred gallon truck, and we'll put it in a six thousand gallon truck and then bulk it up to the landfills, where we'll, we'll take it as, uh, liquid.
Okay, so you're.
And solidify it.
So you're not doing the pelletize process now?
No, that's where, and, uh, that's, that's for the future when we get this permit from the state. Got a lot of homework on it, but, uh, not able to materialize it yet.
Guys, I would just like to know just a little bit more. I'd like to have a conversation with that IDM before I am able to cast a vote on this. That's just me. I'm only one vote in the round. Um, I don't know what you guys are thinking.
I mean, I.
I think it's all in favor for us doing this. They, they've asked me. They, they've called and asked how we, because we was coming along three or three times over the last year and a half.
Well, I think pelletizing would certainly be more stable than.
Liquid.
Can, you know, hoarding liquid until you've got a truckload full to haul it off. I mean, I don't like that idea at all. I don't like either idea, honestly, yeah.
But that's what, but, but that's what they're doing now.
And you gotta clean these grease traps out, uh, every, every, every three months for the big grease traps. A little grease trap is centered in St. Vincent Restaurants. Newburg actually got a mandate that they get done every week. There were, like over in Vandenberg County, it's every, every month for a small grease trap, and it's three, every, every quarter for a big outside grease trap.
Joe, you say big grease traps. Is that, is that, you mean like restaurants?
Yes, yeah, restaurant for like McDonald's.
Okay, so, so that's a big grease trap.
Thousand fifteen hundred gallon, some, some grease traps such as, um, uh, I think I think it was a fifteen hundred. There's, there's a couple of them out there. The old IHOP used to be, uh, six thousand gallons. The old IHOP building there in front of, uh, Sanders. There was, there was, uh, six thousand gallons worth of grease traps there.
So grease traps are primarily, uh, to restaurants, uh, they're.
It's all, all septic and everything. Like, we, we talk septic in about six different counties around here. It, it all goes to, uh, Janler, uh, Evansville, Jasper, uh, you know, different treatment plants, the, the municipal treatment plants.
Now, the septic's easy to get with.
Yeah.
Because wastewater treatment plants aren't excepting. That's fine. It's the grease traps that are, are becoming more and more expensive to maintain. Because as our cost goes up, the transportation, having to go up to Y O two, right now, primarily with our grease, we're either going to Louisville with it or Paducah, um, for them to solidify it there or put it in their waste treatment facility they have. Vandenberg County allows us to dump grease trap waste at the wastewater treatment facility, but it's not an option for us in other counties.
So are you handling any other, um, product, we, from like industrial type of waste?
The only.
Transport.
We'll transport that. We will not process or solidify industrial type waste. The, the solidification process is basi- basically gonna be for our, all the car washes that we service, about their grid pits, um, any of these big, like, wet manufacturing, some of those like equipment manufacturing or maintenance facilities. Repair. We gotta clean out their, their pits, and it's a little bit of mud and maybe some grease, and whatever comes off a heavy piece of equipment.
Joe, is there a, um, you said N dot periodically checks in with you to see how you're coming along with?
I do.
Or, or, I'm sorry, I do. Um, what did I say, N dot? I do. Um, is, is there, have you ever received a letter from them stating, hey, this is something that they, that they support? Would they give you a letter of, of support?
I've got one here. I mean, it's for, there, it's from March twenty-four, March fifth, twenty twenty-one. That goes through our, our reorder that we had with IDM.
Mm-hmm.
And shows that we're in compliance with all the regulations. Um, we are inspected almost on an annual basis for septic permits or septic calling permits anyway, so IDM is regularly on the property.
But you say they're regular on the property, but you, you state that date was three, five, twenty twenty-one. You don't have anything for twenty-two or twenty-three from IDM?
We had an inspector there to do our septic, uh, hauling permit, and it was there in last November.
Joe, I don't think I have any more questions.
Kinda stated my need.
I'd kinda like to do a little bit more research on it and understand it a little bit better. I'm gonna recommend or make a motion that we table for another couple of weeks. Let me do some research on it, talk with the health department, talk with IDM. Is that all right?
Yeah, I, I can, so I can get on board with that. So Bob, you're saying till the June twenty-sixth? Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a first and a.
Wait, timeout.
He'll be, he will be out of town. I, I will be available.
That's fine.
Is that okay, council?
It's fine if, yeah, unless Mr. Beard wants to postpone it to when he can be here.
Okay. Okay, so.
Okay.
June twenty-sixth?
Yep.
I have a first and a second to table till June twenty-sixth, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Thank you, Fritha.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, um, we have a sidewalk acknowledgement. Huntington Creek, Section B, Newburg Development Group LLC by Aaron Miller, the owner. Townley Court at eight hundred and eighty-one lineal feet, Huntington Creek Drive at nine hundred and ten lineal feet, Devon Court at one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven lineal feet, Aston Court thirteen fifty-eight lineal feet. We're currently holding six thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. We've had this for nineteen years. It surely expires in December of twenty-three. An accounting engineer has inspected and signed off on the.
It's all good, Bob.
Yeah, the sidewalks are in, right, the man announcement.
I make a motion to, uh, for the acknowledgement.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
We have a street construction plan, PP twenty-three oh seven, Cadbury Phase Subdivision, petitioner Anderson Makinport by Danny Hubler, President. Approximately fifty-seven point two two acres on the south side of Oak Road, approximately twenty-five hundred feet west of the intersection of Oak Road Road and Roslyn, Ohio Township, Section seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, six and eight, completely going viral. Advertisement standard, June first of twenty-three. They are requesting no improvements to Oak Grove for the phase subdivision.
Jerry Elrod, uh, Morley Project Engineer. I've got exhibits that are saying nothing, very important. Got the same deal. Requesting no road improvements as it pertains to this plat, and then we kinda got a few current flats going, so you would ask that the prior street construction plan to per, per last year, the residential project remain intact, so.
I understand it. To me, it's confusing that we can allow two, uh, primaries on one piece of property, but evidently we can't. So.
We're, we're approaching plan commission tonight to, to, uh, ask for that request as far as the primary settle.
So the street plans would stay with the original primary as approval, and this one would be, if this route would ever happen, it would be no street improvements, so that's fine. These are three large lots, I believe, right?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
Hold up, ten acres.
Yeah, the smallest one's nine and a half.
Yep.
Now they're large.
Okay, so if they come and do subdivision, they'd have to come back for street.
Now, if they do the original primary, it gets confusing, but if they go back to the original primary that is already approved, they don't have to get new street plans again because they were already approved on that.
But they gotta follow the primary plan.
Yeah, in the original.
It'll be original.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we still have to build in accordance with the street plan to per, per the residential development, that primary plan.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
I get it. I, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Molly.
That's it. That's it.
Next order of business is the, uh, approval of minutes from the May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three regular session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next order of business, there's our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, tonight on the consent agenda, we have the county auditor claims voucher report date of six, seven. that's a typo there, of twenty twenty-three, and the payroll date of five, two, of six, two, not five, two, twenty twenty-three. Um, the extension of the roadie agreement for Somerville Road. Uh, the approval of the severe weather plan for the courthouse and judicial center. Approval of the tri-state fire protection proposal for the courthouse, the judicial center, and the sheriff's department. The treasurer's monthly report dated April twenty twenty-three, and the EMA deputy director take home vehicle status.
I don't have any questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes of the dates on A and B of June instead of May and July.
Second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, and Mr. President, I don't have it on the agenda, but um.
We can't talk about it.
Please, sir. Um, Andrew had sent an email earlier and we've kind of gone back and forth about a couple of these contracts. I do have the contract for the health department for the retired employee to come and help. Um, didn't know if we wanted to address that at tonight's meeting.
Sure.
So Linda, who has recently retired, retired rather rapidly, unexpectedly. Uh, this contract has been put in place to allow an opportunity for the incoming employee to use her as a touchstone for learning. Uh, there's a lot of grant writing goes on there and this is a, a first major position for this employee. So get some guidance for her.
Great, and he's paying for that out of grant money, right?
That's out of grant money, yes, it is.
Very good with that.
Probably a good move. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next order of business is our county attorney, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. President. I killed a couple of trees here today for you. First item on the agenda is a, an engagement letter with Baird, who is, uh, who would be the proposed underwriter for the bond issuance for the uh, Warwick County Security Center and Sheriff's Offices project that we're hoping to close on by the end of the year. This has been tabled three times and we've gone through negotiations about the language and we've come to uh, some language that I was happy with and they're willing to accept as well.
Mr. Send any questions or comments?
Terry, you, you and the committee have kind of been the tip of the spear of this, so.
You okay with it?
You okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is also with Baird and this is for underwriting services for the general capital project geo-bond issuance that we're also looking at for by the end of the year to roll over the existing bond on the judicial center that is going to go off this year and roll it over and do some other projects that can be funded. And this has also been reviewed and the language is, has been made to match the other engagement letter. And both of these reflect a reduction in cost as negotiated between Commissioner Philippi and Baird.
Make a motion to approve.
So Terry, just so I'm clear, this is covering not only the judicial or the security center and the, the uh, offices. This incorporates the other uh, items that we've kind of spoke about that, that if we need help with financing on and financing for.
Yeah, so the first one is for the.
Specifically for the sheriff.
And then this one is for the general obligations.
This is for the project, okay.
Primarily the highway garage.
The, the, the garage or complex?
Complex.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
And anything else that we, that we basically put on the project list?
Okay, thank you. Did you make a motion to approve?
I did.
I'll second that.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
The next item on the list, Warwick County Drug Free Council Contract. This is a contract between the county and Youth First to provide services. Uh, these are services they've provided previously, but these are for a coordinator to work with uh, the courts, uh, the judges and the drug-free uh, council that has, has been formed with their, uh, judges oversight. This is a contract that the judges enter into with Youth First, but that has to be approved by the commissioners. Has been reviewed. Uh, this is actually a contract that was missed in terms of being, of approving, but this is actually already ongoing, services being provided, that we just need to approve the contract officially for.
If I may, the uh, long-term person doing that position retired and a new person came in and just kind of getting her to understand all of the pieces that came along with it. But then she also went on maternity leave, so we've had like this gap trying to get this accomplished.
So the term of this would actually be October of twenty twenty-two and would expire in March of twenty twenty-four.
So you're basically saying this formalizes something that's already been.
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract agreement, Youth First.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Next document in your packet is AIA Document B one-three-three. This is the contract between the county and RQAW, the contractor for the Security Center and Sheriff's Office. This contract uh, is quite lengthy, as these AIA contracts are. It's been reviewed uh, quite a bit and gone through a lot of negotiations. The cost of the services being provided is actually found on page twenty-one under Article eleven. And that has gone through quite a few revisions and negotiations as well between committee and Commissioner Philippi and RQAW. But from a legal perspective, this is ready to approve or reject at your wish. I believe this has been tabled a couple of times as well.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.
This is what you and I talked about earlier this week.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, but I just want to say, one, appreciate, I, I know Commissioner Philippi has probably been the tip of the spear on this and in negotiating, not accepting the fact or, and I would say that, but he knows what he's dealing with when he talks to us too. Uh, that we didn't accept the first offer. Uh, just so the general public knows that you got commissioners that are working hard, we're spending tax dollars. We take it seriously and we, we didn't accept uh, what they first threw at us. And so appreciate you and the committee and everybody involved, uh, working on those fees and fighting for our taxpayers.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Next packet within your packet is the Garmong contract. Garmong Construction is the CMC for the project and we've negotiated their contract as well, uh, from the legal perspective in terms of the, the terms of the contract, but also uh, the price for the contract, uh, for their services, which is a, the base amount at this point. The total fee and cost of the project will be negotiated again further based on this base fee, once all the bids come in from all the various contractors. Uh, but you will find that price.
Four, four to five.
On page eleven, Article six, continuing on to page twelve. And this again was also a figure that was proposed initially by Garmong and uh, negotiated by Commissioner Philippi for a better rate.
Andrew, you might want to check the RQAW, I don't know if you got an old version there or not. Before we sign.
Okay.
That one looks good.
Attached to this contract, you'll, there's an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B. And then after the Exhibit B is actually AIA Document A two oh one. And those are all documents that will be used later on, once all the bids come in and we're negotiating the, uh, not to exceed amount for the project.
Well, again, I could say the same thing as I did for the other contract with uh, RQAW. With the Garmong contract, I guess I did leave out, you know, one person or, or the firm that was Andrew and, and your group. Primary Andrew is probably the tip of the spear of that. I think he's been real important because.
Very important.
Because Terry, we, Terry, we accept, you know, or not accept. And so unfortunately, Andrew gets to make the real popular calls of, hey, we're not gonna pay what you want us to pay. And so he's the guy who has to make the tough calls and so, uh.
Appreciate it. Gets to read this fifteen times.
Yeah, he gets paid to do that. Anyway, I mean, those are tough calls to call these. Uh, I, I know we've gotten a call from what the owner, the president saying, hey, are you guys not happy with something? What did we do wrong, you know? And so, uh, we definitely got your attention and, uh, so again, thank, thank you for everybody involved.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you've done. There's lots more to go.
There is, there is.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for that contract as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the Garmong contract.
Second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, number six, is a resolution, which looks like been typed in here, twenty twenty-three dash oh one, is that correct, Heather?
Yes.
So the first resolution of the year, this is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, accepting state public health funding. Uh, as the commissioners are aware, uh, the legislature has adopted House Enrolled Act four dash twenty-three and House Enrolled Act one thousand one dash twenty-three, which will change the payment structure or the funding structure for local health departments. And in order to accept the new funding structure, the commissioners do need to have some sort of formal acknowledgement and acceptance of that new funding structure that can be sent to the state.
Yep.
So this resolution would do that.
Just a little more color to that conversation, just in case anybody's watching and listening, that uh, the health department usually has to apply for grants for a lot of its funding. And this kind of fixes that, I guess, if you will. Not that it was broken before, but it makes their funding more consistent, so it's a good thing.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, and I actually do have one additional item that isn't on the agenda. And this was alluded to earlier by Heather. This is an agreement for professional services between Paul Cron and the Warwick County Health, uh, Board of Health. And this is to engage in the vector control services that are, is, is uh, monitoring mosquito and West Nile Zika viruses by the health department throughout the county. And uh, this is renewal of that contract for twenty twenty-three. And it would be effective June first and through the end of the year of, uh, end of December of this year. And that is for a twenty-four hundred dollars a month and it's out of the health department trust account.
Their former vector control person left the end of May, so this is a replacement person.
Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I guess I will second that.
First and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all that I have.
Thank you, sir. Next order of business is our county engineer and highway superintendent.
Thank you. Tonight I just have the uh, three parcels for Telephone Road and Administrative Settlements, uh, for the right-of-way purchase. Uh, there is an error I sent in. Parcel twenty-five is the parcel for reworking the driveway for safety. Parcel fifty-nine is on hold right now, uh, while we're getting some counteroffer together. And in place of that, I have parcel thirty-two that, uh, to be approved tonight. So the original, let's go in order here, parcel number twenty-five. This is uh, to do with the driveway at the corner of Telephone Road and Skylark Lane. There is a uh, safety issue and an inability to, for the resident to park in front of their garage. Um, and the resident proposed that possibly switching the driveway to enter in off of Skylark Lane and moving a garage door on their uh, outbuilding. So in response to that, this is an uh, increase in value of our original proposal of fourteen thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars. But then of that, we reduce around nine thousand dollars for the old drive that we had to build, that we no longer have to build. So I would recommend approval moving forward and it's safe for the corridor and for the resident, safer.
Make a motion to approve parcel uh, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Parcel sixty, this is a uh, increase from the property owner of twenty-five hundred dollars and it's to do with the uh, cost of cure for fence. That was rejected, uh, initially. It was not included, it's five hundred feet of fence at twenty-five hundred dollars. So I recommend approval of that as well to secure that parcel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
The last item I have here, I believe you've already gave consensus to, but it was parcel thirty-two. And in this, the request for an additional seven hundred and fifty dollars in regards to market value. So I would recommend we agree to the seven hundred and fifty dollar amount increase.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have our first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Sheriff, you and I had a discussion already, kind of about the uh, weapons detection at the front desk. Is there anything you want to add to that? I thought Sherry was gonna be here and she's not.
She had to be.
Yeah.
Sheriff Mark Wild, um, you know, just obviously the one that's out, uh, just look at replacement. Easy sometimes with just dollars, but uh, there's some really good technology out there, as we discussed. Uh, kind of like, if you guys look or researching or helping, but you know, the technology, obviously pay, I'm just in the cool stuff out there that's uh, different, that can detect. I think you've seen some out there, Deacon's Hospital has it. It's even like schools starting to get it, so it's kind of more of a, just, and you don't really slow down, it's kind of all proven, it's different things. But it's just whatever you guys feel, maybe, I don't know, if you want to bring the judges or whoever involved, but.
Good, good call.
Who's researching that, Mike?
Uh, Sherry Seavers was, where you guys.
This morning, she had all kinds of prices rounded up for various vendors for, for like, kind of equipment.
Yeah.
I know she was gonna do some more research this afternoon.
Mike, I'm gonna ask a question here, maybe I shouldn't ask it, but I'm gonna ask it. You know, the, the judges have, a- and I know this technology is expensive and I totally support this technology, but I understand it's on the Board of Commissioners, you know, that, that expenditure's put on us, but. know, that expenditure's put on us, but how come the courts, how come the judges, you know, they have a fund, how come they can't participate in this?
I get Greg Ridge. Yeah, I know, I guess because it's still a kind of building, it's falls, I mean, I really can't.
But we're doing this primarily for the judges.
Well, strictly for the courts, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not saying we wouldn't have that if our if our audit, but we are mandated because of the judges and courts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to get to that, but I know what you're saying.
Okay, so if I have three judges that don't like it, or four judges, I mean, I just got to ask the questions, or they got a pile of money sitting there, why, Greg, am I asking the question I shouldn't be asking, or what? Okay.
There we go.
They got a lot of money sitting there.
And if everybody was a little bit in the kidding, obviously, you know.
That's all I'm asking, you know, because, you know, I'm disappointed the machine has failed. We bought kind of a.
You said.
I I didn't know it was refurbished, I thought it was a demo, but I've slept since then, so, so, okay, so we bought a refurbished machine. Obviously, I learned some things what a refurbished machine is. I didn't learn that when we were buying it. I don't know if I would approve that, you know, in the in the first place, but anyway, it is what it is, and that's water under the bridge, but, you know, I just know that, you know, that they have some money, and it would just be nice if, you know, we participate in this, so.
Ever hurts the ass.
Huh?
Ever hurts the ass.
Alls they can do is, you know.
What they're going to tell you.
I had no, really, I'd say, you know, we operate the system to provide the security, but I mean, for that building, but you know, obviously, we want to use our expertise and let you know what's out there and let everybody make the best decision, because, I mean, you can go cheap or you can go expensive. I think there's things in between, but I just, there is, I want to make sure that you guys are aware of some of the technology, and I know Terry's very aware, does a good job, but is out there that can be used in these facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else for the meeting commissioners?
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.